Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of council for September 20th, 2021. And if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick call of all, please.
Spinks, here. Janutus?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Cochee?
Here. And council, you have the minutes of the web session of September 7th, 2021. Any corrections? None. Can I motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Spinks? Call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021. Any corrections to that one? None. No motion for acceptance by Miesak, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes. We have no old business tonight, so we'll get right to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. First, just a notice that the contractor working on the Dominion project will be closing Washington Street this Thursday between Solon and Taylor. They're going to be making a full road repair there, so that will be closed. They did, Dominion did submit plans to the city as they indicated in last week's memo for their next large-scale line replacement project. That project is, the area that it would be addressing would be Archer Road. We have not indicated if we would permit that project to start this year or not. They would like to start in October. I think we're going to be recommending this be pushed out until the spring or further into next year. We'll be meeting this Wednesday with our engineer and our public works department to talk about that some more. But they are wrapping up the current project. We are wrapping up a grant, a $5 million grant to the state of Ohio for various improvements of wastewater treatment plant facility. That was in response to a announcement that the governor made about a month and a half ago regarding funding for wastewater and water projects. So we are submitting that, as well as an OPWC grant for Broadway improvements. As council knows and the public knows, we're going to be doing some large improvements to the waterline, electrical, underground utilities in Broadway, specifically through the historic district. And we're applying for funds and we were successful there. But in response, ODOT is going to be resurfacing Broadway as early as next summer. That is a $2.1 million project. The city's responsible for 20% of that $2.1 million and 100% of any ADA sidewalk ramps and things for the entire length. Realistically, Bedford's portion for that is probably $600-plus thousand dollars, so we are applying for some grant dollars through the state and OPWC. This Saturday, the 25th, is going to be our second shred day for this year. It's going to be from 9:00 to 12:00 in the municipal complex's parking lot. Next Saturday, October 2nd, is the Children's Fall Fest on the Commons. Be sure to stop down at that event as well. And we did see two demolitions over the last couple of weeks on some properties that we weren't getting any movement on. The first is 591 Broadway. The land bank assisted in demolishing that property. That was the old blighted animal clinic. That was covered by the land bank. And now we are working with and connecting the current owner of the property to BBG, who renovated the old Mr. G's and moved in there. They're looking to potentially acquire the vacant parcel. And the old Morgan Maytrick building off of Forbes, a lot of people think that building is actually in Oakwood. It's actually in Bedford. That structure was taken down. It's been empty for some time. They had a couple of different brokers come through the property over the last year. Ultimately, it was decided that it really was unmarketable. The best use would be to demolish it, have some green space there to market as buildable land, which is good for us. You know, get that structure down. It's been taken down at the owner's expense. And once it's finished, well, there'll be a large space there to market right off the highway. So that is in the process of coming down. That end of report.
Thank you. I just thought half that building was in Oakland.
Majority of it's in Bedford. There might be a slipper of land.
There was a portion. There was a portion, and the building itself was in Oakland.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Back when I was on the fire department, we had two churches.
It won't see it better.
But it's, it's a shame to see that building go, but it's been there a long time. Yeah. It's been, it's been needed to come down now, but hopefully we can find something to go in that spot that'll be productive. Mr. Law Director.
Really no, no report, but I would, the court is seeking part-time and full-time clerks for their, for their operations. So if anyone knows anybody looking for a job, please get your resumes to the court. I think, I believe it's on the website if anybody wants more details than that. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Well, welcome once again. We have Jennifer Howland, our Assistant Finance Director, with us this evening. And the only item I have tonight is a reminder to taxpayers in Bedford, anybody over 18 years of age, if you haven't filed, you need to file this year for 2020. We still have quite a few people have not done so at this point. And a reminder to all businesses that to file your net profits returns. If you have an extension, which most of you do, they'll be due by October. So we will be looking at those from each of the businesses. That's the end of my report this evening.
Thank you. And council, we'll start with Mrs. Spinks.
Welcome back, Kathy and Dodd. It's good to see y'all over there, even though you're behind a mask. It's good to see ya. Kind of follow with Mike on the October 2nd for the kids' fall fest. Usually every year I paint faces, about 200 of them. I've done that for a long time. So this year I was trying, me and Aunty, we're trying to think, what could we do that would be safe for me to be, not get that close? So we're actually going to be painting rocks this year. So it's something that the kids will have, they can give to gifts. So we'll be doing several different things. We'll have several different categories, from little kids, middle kids, and then older kids, and we'll have several tails. So me and Aunty's come up with that to do some safe project with the art, with the kids, with art on that fall festival. So it should be fun. Want to play kudos to my little buddy that lives on Grand. He became, his name is Isaiah Gaston, and he became a professional artist at our art show last week at the age of 10 years old. So very proud of him. He's been drawing since he's about six, and that was about the age I was. I was probably about five or six when I started. I started doing murals at eight. So I've kind of taken him, and he presented me notes that I love red birds. And I told him, I said, well, he gave this to me, and I said, well, when you get famous, I said, nobody's going to believe that I knew you. So I said, you gotta write, you gotta sign it on the back. So on the back of it, he said, "To Mr. Sandy from the real Isaiah, 2021." So I thought that was really cute. He had a good time. He sold out in three days. I want to thank everybody that supported him, all the artists there were just took him under with. What a, we've got so many talented young people in our city and older people in our city. We've got, we're surrounded with a lot of really good artists here in Bedford. Good stuff. Now, bad stuff. Mike, garbage with these people that are moving out, our people, renters, same problem has been going on for a month. They're putting their garbage out again on Black Thursday. When the garbage picks up on Wednesday, they put more out there after the garbage truck leaves. It's all over the place. Everybody knows I pick up trash every day, but that's getting really old. They've been working supposedly, so what's our next step?
After their warning, if it's not collected, they're cited. The police department's, our internal process is, one service goes out there. So I know service was out in your ward. Councilman Asbury sent me a notice on another property in his ward. They go out there, and we have an internal process where one service posts a warning notice, police is made aware, and police knows to check the following day, and then that house is cited if it's not removed. So that's the process that we go along. We can't stop anybody. If they still do it, then they're going to get cited again. I can't, I mean, we can't stop people from putting it out, and we can't actually drag it up to their property.
No.
But what we can do is we can't cite them.
Well, now it's...
So that's what, that's what's happening.
But they're putting bags. Now the animals are getting in it, and I've even put a nice little note on their door saying, please, you know, please don't do this, you're going to be cited. And it's just, it's aggravating because it's been, this is three weeks in a row that they're doing. So it's just, it's very aggravating for the residents, the residents, the neighbors that live next to them. We had several, this has been a problem for a long time, when someone moves out over the weekend. They pile the tree line with oil, furniture, and everything. Then it stays there, and then sometimes the garbage people don't pick it up. We have a problem on Tudor right now because they're doing water. So there's a big hole in the thing. Well, the garbage is right there, so you can't get around that. I turn that, I send a picture to them. Again, who do we cite on something like that? That's on Tudor. I get it. And again, who do you cite on that when someone, well, it goes to the landlord.
Property owner.
Property owner. Property owner. So...
I'll double check tomorrow, but in that case, we actually service either Clint or Sean. They personally call the property owner. We have their numbers on file, and they usually give them 24 hours to remove it or they're cited. So...
Yeah, they've been working on this house and working on the house. Next thing you know, here's all this garbage just piled out over the weekend. They did it like Saturday morning, so it was, it was quite the mess, too. Thank you. Thank you for this feed sign on Willard. I was out picking up trash, and here comes the same three cars that raced down Willard. They didn't see it. And I clocked, I looked up, 79 miles an hour. The other one was doing about 81 down Willard. So I'm hoping they, you know, they get a lot of feedback on this, and the residents appreciate putting it on there, and I do, too. So hopefully, I know you just moved it off of Grand Croft. There's still several areas, but it has got a little bit better. Car carriers are my friend down at the end of Grand Boulevard, out picking up trash today. Had my car parked way up with the flashers on it. He missed me by like this. Big car carrier coming down Grand. Big sign there says no. So I mean, they're not, this has been going on for way too long. Guy has way too many excuses. He keeps making excuses.
Well, the issue is with the car carrying company. It's not, it's not the business. I think the lieutenant mentioned at the board meeting, or it was Calvin. When they get a different driver, that driver takes the fastest route, and that's the, that's the problem. They've sent notices out to the company, they've sent things out there. I know PD was stopping down there last week to speak with them.
Yes.
But that's the challenge. It's not, if those were, like Bill said, if it was those employees, we wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
It's the company that they contract out to deliver the vehicles.
Yeah.
And if they would come after, you know, if they're coming after hours or if it's weekends, you know, that's when it's tough. I would urge anybody, if they're, if they see it parked on the side street, or if it's coming down the side street, call, and we'll have an officer there right away to talk to them.
Yeah. I got pictures on it. That same business, that's where all the trash, there's so much trash. It's like two or three times a day, I'm picking up trash at the end of Grand and Broadway. Two or three times. And I sat out there, I was picking up trash and watched the guy get out of his car and throw a big bag of Wendy's right down on the ground and walk into the business. So I yelled at him and said, hey, pick up your trash. Well, he called me not-so-nice Nate and walked in. And so this is an employee there. So I mean, I'm asking the residents and stuff, I'm starting this Clean Bedford thing. I'm out every day. I've got residents helping me on to, you know, try to keep our, our city clean. And then these, these businesses, they have to be responsible, too. They have to help us out. You know, if this is their parking lot, you go up to Walgreens, it's, it's deplorable. And I know it's the same thing. Everybody's short-staffed. I get it. I get it. It's everywhere. But you still, you gotta, you know, you gotta take care of your property. And then it blows out in the street, then it becomes another thing. It's everywhere. It's not just here. But again, if you're interested, I've started this Clean Bedford, if you're interested in helping out, I am working with some companies to get some trash picker-uppers and talk to Mike. I know that fixed talk to Mike and several other people are getting, about getting more trashcans around town. So Mike will be talking to you more about that, too. So end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy.
I just got one thing to remind everybody, War III's meeting, meeting is next Monday night. Mike, is that 7 o'clock, the board meetings?
Yeah. Yes.
It's next week, War III. And I don't even know who's with me. Saunders, you with me?
Yeah, I'm with you. Three and six.
Um, three and six. Okay. That's all I have in the report. Thank you.
Mrs. Miesak.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see that and Mr. Williams in their favorite corner there of the room, taking up, taking notes and being with us again. I wanted to say thank you for a very successful board meeting, for one and four. We had a very nice group of people there. We talked corrections, we talked ways of doing things. It was a good, informative meeting. We were running on schedule pretty well. And then afterwards, they had their personal concerns addressed to the mayor or our city manager. So I, I'm kind of looking forward already to doing another one for next year unless, because we're running out of time for this year, so we have to wait for next year. I was going to ask you, Mike, our city manager, on the fall fest for the kids, the time is what, 12 to 4? What time would that be?
10 to 1.
Okay. Thank you. Let me set that. I'll put that down right now. All right. The main issue I have concern is the, many people have a lot of their living hedges in their yard, and they don't seem to address it too much. And I had talked to Michelle about the gentleman that lives in a large house across the street from Glendale School, which is either a rental home now or the parents put their son in that house. But that is a corner house attorney in West Glendale, across the street from the school directly. His bushes have not been cut for many factors. And they are really out of hand. They're pretty nasty. And then also 32 Grandmere, there's a bush at the end of that gentleman's property. I don't know who's living there. I believe it could be the Free, their last name is Free, but I'm not sure. They're still there. That is a, it's, they can't back out of the yard, the yards above them, because it's, it's in the view. It's hard to see the street from that bush being, it's overgrown. We have, I guess, many people that have addressed their hedges and have done a nice job, and I'd like to see it look a little nicer with that corner house. Didn't carry the other one. I also did mention to Michelle a couple of weeks ago, the school has the wild, they have, there's a little pond there with their, with their greenery, too. But that is like growing out of, needs to be trimmed back to us. Other than that, there's no report. One question was, when a person has a party at their house, if they don't take up both sides of the street, which this party did over the weekend, do they have to call for permission if they're going to have a lot of people coming so they, because the parking's, you know, like, because it's not a street, and parked on both sides, it's making it a reference.
Well, I mean, they can't park on both sides.
Okay.
But if they're just parking on the street, it doesn't, you know...
Well, I think it was both sides, but we, I reported a treaty ran over due to this party for residents this morning. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Asbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, ladies.
Hello.
Good to see you. And I did discuss that with city manager about the, the corner house with the bushes hanging over the sidewalk. It's kind of hard because that likes to bicycle or tricycle down there, adult tricycle. So if we can get that cut back, that'd be great. Briefly, the summer concert series is supposed to wrap up this Wednesday with Pop Tart Band and Mario Food Truck. The weather doesn't look like it's going to cooperate. Will that be rescheduled or is that just...
If we can. Aaron was, we were talking about that earlier today, and I know he was going to reach out to them. So we'll have to see what, as we get into late September, October, it may be a wash, but we'll see if we can get it rescheduled.
Okay. Sounds good. Coming up, Mike already went over the Children's Fall Fest and the shred day this coming Saturday. Friday, October 1st is the Bedford Downtown Alliance's last, first Friday of the year. This is themed Fall Fun and Pooch Parade. So if you bring your children down and they're in costume, they get a guaranteed goodie bag. If you bring your pooches down, there are different judgings for smallest, largest dog, smartest dog, tallest dog, all kind of good things. So bring your kids down, bring your pooches down, have some fun, some giveaways and prizes. And just to remind everybody that the hydrants are still being flushed around the city. So if you do run into a low-pressure situation, that might be the reason for it. We talked to firefighters. They don't have a set schedule. They do have set streets, and they go out in between calls as they have time. So it's really hard to predict from day to day where they're going to be. So just be, be aware of that situation. And that's about it. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
All right. What, last today? That's unusual. Anyway, I'll start with the easy one. Mike, the tree lawns on Columbus Road, south of Northfield Road, on the north side of the street, there's several of them over there that they haven't mowed in weeks. One is the big red duplex that's over there and so forth. If we could get something out there to get those mowed down, and the same goes for Northfield Road, south of the waterproofing company, those tree lawns, some of those had weeds that were two feet high. But for some reason, those two areas, it's all summer long, seemed to let them get out of hand for a while. So now that's the easy part. Next one, utility pole on Northfield Road that was clipped off two months ago. It's still clipped off and held with a guide wire. That's a health and safety issue big time. It looks like it's actually moving. It seems to be leaning more. It's got a can on it, so it's got a heck of a lot of weight on that big pole. Two months is an excessive amount of time as far as I'm concerned getting that fixed. I assume the house that's there at that driveway print is abandoned or empty because the city cut it a week ago.
We've cut a lot of people's grass.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
So I'm surprised somebody hasn't hit the guide wire going in and out of that driveway because it's right up against the driveway, too. But a rope on a pole that's that tall is a safety hazard. And if it does snap or it gives way, we're going to have one hell of a mess on Northfield Road. We ought to get them, light a fire under them and get them going. So I'm sure they had to order that pole because it's such a big one, but because First Energy doesn't stock anything anymore. They used to have several yards throughout Cleveland where they stocked everything, and now they don't stock a thing. So we need to get that thing corrected, especially with winter coming, Halloween's coming, and a lot of other odds and ends. It's an open invitation for kids. Now, the next thing is, is we'll get, we're, we can't just do First Energy. Let's start on Dominion. Are the sidewalks that are being replaced through the presidential area being monitored so we don't end up with the same problem we did on Columbus Road where kids rode bikes through it, walked through them, roped on them, and so forth?
We have an inspector out. I mean, we can't have someone sit there for 12 hours.
Well, we had quite a few destroyed on Columbus Road because of that. So there's quite a bit of sidewalk going in through the presidential area, and I would hope that somebody's at least monitoring some of it to make sure it's hard enough.
We have an inspector.
Yeah, so that we don't end up with the same situation we did on Columbus Road. At the same time, you stated that Dominion's actually looking at Archer Road as their next phase. You know, my street's had a gas line on it that's leaked for almost 14 years. They have yet to replace it. I think they ought to start looking at some of the older areas on the other side of Columbus, specifically my neighborhood. They've got lines, and they're well aware of the fact that thing's leaking. So it is an issue over in that area. It's killed almost every tree in my neighborhood on the tree lawns. In fact, the last, the closest maple to it right now is also dying because of it. I'm quite sure it's right on top of that gas line, which is leaking, too. So we have an issue in that area. So I was hoping their next phase would be just cross Columbus Road and let's start doing this older section. The only difference with that is, is we certainly do not want Dominion cutting holes in Nordham because it took us forever to get that fixed. So I know it's coming. It's just a question of what priorities that they have on some of those. And lastly, during the arts festival, I sat on the bench right at Broadway in South Point for a lot of the time, and I was surprised at the number of people, especially with a festival going on, that not only were speeding down Broadway, but ran that red light. And it wasn't just one car, it was two, three at a time that were running that light. And there's pedestrians looking across the street. So I checked it out the other day just for the heck of it, and there's no festival there, and people are still running that light. That light's being run consistently. Now, I know I've mentioned before that the light at Columbus and Northfield Road gets run all the time, too. And tonight on my way home from work over, coming over to here, three cars ran that light, and they weren't yellow, they were red. So we, we have a red light issue in town in certain intersections that we need to do something about. I'm not necessarily in favor of red light cameras, but I'll tell you, a temporary one at some of these intersections might cause people to start thinking, hey, the red light's a red light for a reason. So we need to look into that. And then, of course, as Vic has said, our board meeting for Ward 6 is next Monday here at City Hall. Hope to see everybody here. I know we don't have too many people from Ward, we got a couple here tonight. But those that are watching it online, you know, come and bring your concerns. This is your meeting. Let's hear where you think things can be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. I think part of the problem with those lights at Northfield and Columbus and Northfield and Solon is the timing on those. If you're on the side street coming up to North, you sit there for a long time, even if there are no cars coming on Northfield. The timing on that needs to be checked on those two lights. That would help because people sit there and sit there, and there's no cars coming and, you know, to take off. So we can check into that. All right, let's get out into business. The next three ordinances... The next three ordinances, we are gonna put them on first reading as we like to do, so if people have any questions on them, they all have to do with water and sewer, sewer rates and rate reduction for seniors and disabled, so. We'll go to ordinance number 9899-21.
Replacing ordinance number 7780-05 relating to water rates and declaring an emergency.
Motion to put it on first reading by Fluharty, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9900-21.
Amending ordinance number 9816-20 entitled, section 911.03 of our codified ordinance is entitled Rate Reduction for Disabled Persons and Senior Citizens for Water and Sewer Discounts and Declaring an Emergency.
Again, motion for first reading by Miesak, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Mike, do you want to give a, or Frank, just a quick overview on those three so they know what we're, what we mean?
To do a quick overview, we are not raising the rates of the water rates next year in 2022. Our rate reduction went up slightly, less than 1% with the CPI index, so it will now be a value of $34,694 for total household income. And finally, with the wastewater, the sewer rates do need an increase, will be going up 4% in line with that in anticipation of our EPA projects that we'll be doing. So this is first reading of, probably do three readings on this.
Thank you. Ordinance number 9902-21.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the city of Bedford Patrolmen adopting the terms of the attached September 15th, 2021 tentative agreement and ordering them into effect and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Miesak. Mike?
Thank you, Mary. This, Bedford Patrolmen, as well as the next ordinance, sergeants and lieutenants are near the same contract. The current CBA expired at the end of 2020, so we've been negotiating throughout this year for years '21, '22, and '23. We were actually able to mediate and come to an agreement on a new CBA. There were some increases in, I'm gonna get the, the big items there, increases as far as in insurance, we're shifting over to a percentage where employees satisfying wellness will pay 8% of the city's monthly COVID rates, those not satisfying the wellness, it will be 13. There was an increase in life insurance for the staff, and the raises include a 6.5% increase over three years. So to be specific, it's 2%, 2.5%, and 2%. Been discussing it with, obviously, our staff, the mediator, as well as the police. I think it was a fair deal all around. We recommend passing this. It was done very amicably and, and kudos to the team on the bargaining committee over there in police. Very respectful and, and again, I think we came to a fair, fair agreement all around.
Good, good job. Clear, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And ordinance number 9903-21.
There's two bargaining units, the patrolmen and then the sergeants and lieutenants, so they're separate union, well, it's the same bargaining unit but separate contracts. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the city of Bedford sergeants and lieutenants adopting the terms of the attached September 15th, 2021 tentative agreement and ordering them into effect and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Miesak. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And we have a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to accept Stephen G. Meyer, attorney-at-law at Washington Street in Sprint Falls, representing KMM Properties of Cleveland LLC, request for the rezoning and lot split of parcel 814-28-014, as well as the rezoning of the existing rear portion of parcel 814-29-006 from R2 to I1. Before we vote on this, is there a representative here for that?
No, no, sir, he's not here, no. I understand you might want to...
You wanted to amend, but...
I, I kind of came up with some verbiage that might satisfy counsel. Subject, approving the, the planning commission's decision addition on the building of a mound and landscaping similar in size, quality, and nature as the existing mound on the property. Does that sound like, can we get a motion to amend the recommendation?
By Janutus, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And with that amendment, I have a motion to accept the decision of the planning commission with the amendment by Asbury, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And with that amendment, I have a motion to accept the decision of the planning commission with the amendment by Asbury, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And with that amendment, I have a motion to accept the decision of the planning commission with the amendment by Asbury, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Motion passed. Motion to accept the planning commission's decision to accept Fluent Solar Company representing Michael and Kelsey Haggerty, owners of 133 Powers Road, Bedford, request for a zoning permit to install a roof-mounted solar, solar photovoltaic system on the southwest side, which is the front and northwest side of the dwelling. Is anybody here for that? Okay, and we discussed this in the back. Any questions? Call the roll, please. Hope we didn't get a motion. I'm sorry. I didn't get a motion for such. By Asbury, second by Saunders. Now you can call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
And motion, a motion to accept the planning commission's decision denying Life Storage Williamsville, New York, request for a conditional use approval in accordance with City of Bedford Codified Ordinances 1937.03, letter D, to utilize the parcels 814-34-006, 814-34-007, located in B2 zoning district, and parcel 814-22-020, located in R2 zoning district, parcels known as 1405 Broadway, to construct two, three-story self-storage facilities. See, City of Bedford Codified Ordinance 1305.09 regarding the new structures. Someone here for that?
Good evening. My name is Dan Schwanz, I'm with Life Storage, Dusty Keating from Polaris Engineering, and I'd just like to speak on, on, I guess, the, the planning commission and, and they voted, I guess, against our conditional use permit, and, but I think may have, and I don't want to speak for the planning commission in any sense of the word, we were, we were applying for a conditional use permit, and what we were, I guess, got into the discussion of, of what the buildings would look like, and we tried to stress that we would work with the planning commission on a building facade that would, would benefit us, benefit everyone, fit in with the community. So what, what we're seeking is just the conditional use permit to allow us to go forward with the, the due diligence process to purchase the parcels. We are more than willing to work with the planning commission on, on a building that would fit the community, to the extent that, that the one part of that parcel that is an R2, I believe, we would leave it for and, and build in some kind of landscape, island, raised corner as you come up to the property. So that's, I guess that's why I'm here, to try and get that across, that we are here, part of the community, working with the planning commission to, to come to a, a building facade, I guess, a building look that would, everyone would be happy with, so.
Anyone have a question?
I, I have a question. The expectation was that we would be voting on the basis of the three-story building as was described, and the reservation on our part is that we would be voting in, in, in effect on the three-story building, and what we're hearing is that, that the three-story building is not necessarily the case.
In the interim, since that meeting and, and tonight's session, I've worked with our civil engineering firm and my architect to, to figure out how we could achieve something that was amenable to the planning commission, and to the extent where we, I believe the, the sentiment was, a three-story building so close to the road, Broadway as you come in, that gateway to Bedford, I think the way it was described, and it is that that would be somewhat obtrusive, to be so close to the road. So we were looking to, to figure out how we could make the project work financially, but also be able to set the building back from the road, or, or move it to redesign to possibly a, a two-story building in the front, three-story building in the back, possibly a longer two-story building that, that, you know, may take a jog toward, I don't know how to describe it, but, but I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that we're, we're open to a different design that works for everyone.
I think the question is whether you would approve the use or not is, is this point, and like he says, that if you do, you still have to come before planning to get approval on whatever structure they decide to put on the property.
Is this something that should be resubmitted to planning? Well, we're in a mission that's a different, different situation.
Get to that in a minute.
If you approve the use, they will resubmit to planning.
That's, we're, we're, as I understand it, you know, we're just trying to get through the first hurdle in being able to purchase the property. That will allow us, with the conditional use permit, to take the, the next steps that we need to internally, but we're fully aware that we need to come back, submit a full site plan to the planning commission, and then discuss it at that point.
Part of, part of the problem I have initially, just to be out in the open with it, I was not in favor of that business being in that location when it started. I wasn't in a position to hold on it back then, I wasn't on council back then. I was not happy when the two-story building went up. Just a prime piece of real estate, that's, to me, is kind of wasted with that building, that storage unit's right there when you come into town to see it. It's my opinion, it shouldn't have never been there in the first place. I, could have been used much more beneficial to the city, had something like a medical office building or whatever go in there, which it's not, so I know we have to deal with what's there now, but it's my personal opinion that I'm, I'm not in favor of putting anything there extra than what is there. That's my opinion, we have six other voices that can, if they choose to say something or not, or they can just vote their conscience as we go. And we thought by voting tonight, even changing the zoning, if we're not gonna approve your, if we feel we're not gonna approve your buildings no matter what, then you didn't want to waste your time to buy the property and go through all that and spend a whole lot of money designing and things like that to, you know, I don't want to see you spending money, but I'm just voicing my opinion on how I would vote for it.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm confused what I would be voting for.
We're voting on changing the zoning so they would have something they could build on, but...
But we don't know, now we don't know what they're building.
Well, it's stated...
We're in anticipation of their...
It's stated right in here, two, three-story buildings.
Oh, I don't know, this, I don't think, is that stated in there?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So it's on the record as two, three-story buildings. Now, we have an option to vote on it tonight, which we could agree with the planning commission to deny, or we could go against the planning commission and approve, or we can send it back to planning.
So should we deny?
Yes.
So should we deny or, or, or accept the, the planning commission's decision to deny? Now that there's, these people are considering a different approach to the use of that, you know, property.
Not a different use.
Not a different design.
Different building.
Different design.
Different design.
Same thing. They, they have the opportunity to resubmit to planning commission?
Yes.
A different, a different approach to the, to that property? So that, so if we voted, so if we voted to deny it, they, they would come to the planning commission with a new, with a new vision for...
But we wouldn't approve or deny, we would just turn it back to the planning commission. Or we can vote on it tonight.
I think what the mayor was alluding to is that if you're not going to approve it ever, let's do it now, rather than before they rehash their documents so, so, you know, to spend more money to...
I expressed my opinion and...
Which they're willing to do, you know, see.
Yeah. Anybody else, and you've expressed your opinion?
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm confused.
If we don't approve the lot, the zoning change, they can't go ahead with it.
That's done.
deny it, and it's done. And saves them some time and money, which, I know the time and money probably is not the deciding factor, but-
Or if you want to give them an opportunity to present some different proposal, you could refer it back to planning.
Am I in error in thinking that we're asking for a conditional use permit to operate within that zone? We're not necessarily asking for a change in zoning on those parcels?
That's true, the use-
Well, the one isn't. The one is our, our design too.
Correct, the ones are too, but I think he had mentioned that they would, I don't want to speak for you, but you said that-
Yes, we have no intention of building, we purposely directed our design, the two parcels that are in the B2 and not in the R2, to stay out of that completely, and, like I said, you know, create some kind of landscaping effort that would be attractive to the community.
So if you did deny the request, you would delete the two to three storage, two to three-story self-storage facility, it's just limited to the use, the way it's worded is confusing, you're right. And, but it's not really for the two, approval of the two, three-story self-storage facilities, it's merely stores, self-storage facilities, are you going to approve that use on those parcels, basically?
Excuse me, and would it, to this end, would it be possible to put language in it that the approval of the conditional use permit would be predicated on an approval by the planning commission at a later date? Or the next session, or whatever point for you deem?
Yeah, that would be us just turning it back to planning. That would take care of that.
I have a question too. Do you happen to know how many jobs are currently on the site with the Life Storage Now on that facility?
I don't have the hours. We have a store manager and an assistant store manager and maintenance, people in a rotating fashion, I don't have those numbers, I apologize.
So is it our wish to send it back to planning, or do you to vote on it? Send it back to planning and we'll see what better results they might come up with. Planning, Dick?
Yeah, I'm all for it. That's what we'll do.
They're not denying it, they're not granting it, but they want to see your design before they make the decision, I guess.
So we're just putting the process back?
Understood, and we're still developing the concept, the facade of the buildings. We were just, I guess I came here tonight in the interest of time, and we're in the due diligence period, and we're trying to at least see if the use will be accepted, so we can go forward with it. But, I mean, if that's, yeah, the council, it's-
Depends what you come up with, is, again, I gave my opinion, there are six other votes, so.
If you're willing to consider it, is what they're asking folks at some other plan or back. You don't have to, it's up to you guys.
Well, that's, I think we all agreed to go back to planning and-
Let's make a roll call, a motion to refer the matter back to planning, prefer the consideration.
Now, a motion for such, by Mizek, second by Asbury. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Eric's concerned, you know, they want to keep it residential in nature.
Okay, we come to that portion of the meeting for hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Kathy Williams, 491 Lamson. I came to publicly thank Mr. Tony Romito for the wonderful job that he did behind our property. He was a man of his word, he cleaned it down to the grass. This is something that I have been asking to do since Bob Reed was here, and within a week, he had it done. And if there's some way that you could tell him, we truly appreciate it and to thank him. My second question is, the water retention pond in the back, does that eventually go into Tinkers Creek?
I don't believe it does. I'd have to check.
It goes into Wood Creek. At Wood Creek, he empties into Tinkers Creek, right at kind of, on the river.
Why doesn't it drain? Why doesn't it drain?
It's not intended to drain.
It's filled-
It's supposed to slowly drain, you know, yeah.
Well, when we had a very bad rain, which we're supposed to be getting this week, it's to the top. And in the summer, the, when it was filled with the last bad rain, there were, I can't imagine how many dragonflies, which means mosquitoes, which means I've complained. If there is some way that you can see, because I would think at the bottom, there should be a pipe that slowly drains, that goes down, and it goes under Broadway and down to Wood Creek, like you said.
Yeah, I can, I'll check that, I don't, I don't recall.
There is a pipe there.
There is a pipe?
There should be. It fills up, there's an overflow pipe that goes down, and it goes into the creek, and after the creek-
It's clogged.
There's some stuff there, but not fully clogged, it was open when I went by the other day.
You know, Frank, there have been times that there was that Japanese whatever that they have even in front of Glendale School, that it's-
We'll check it, I know we've done, so for the last year and a half, we had a company come out, because it was totally overtaken by an invasive growth.
Yes.
That we could not, I mean, it actually made its way all the way up to the back of City Hall. We actually, I think it was, Tinkers Creek Watershed actually walked it with Sean Francis, and then they recommended a company, and the reason why some of it was dug out, it's actually, it was sprayed, they had to bring in something to try to kill that growth.
Right.
It was done on a two-part, they did it the first time, we had to wait so long to see if what it was able to kill, and we dug it out, and then they came back, they hit it again, and now we're going to have to clear another section. Normally what we do is, you know, there's fountains back there, and we were not able to have those in because of that growth. So it was cleared out, it still needs to get cleared out some more. I mean, that overtook all of the wildflowers, everything that was originally put back there, it was that growth that completely overtook those.
Right, very, very.
I don't know, I can check into as far as the plans, and we can even check to make sure that that's clear. And I know it does, obviously, you know, the one storm where the pool was flooded, I actually walked back there during that storm. You know, there were kids down there that needed to get, you know, told to not go through the raging water, but I don't know where that, again, Frank said there's a pipe down there, I'd have to look, and we can look to make sure it's clear.
Okay, well, I would think that it would be easier to take care of it late fall, because with spring and summer, you're going to have the same routine next year. And, you know, I noticed that when you killed the growth, you know, some of the red-wing blackbirds left, who cares? And then some of the crows and the starlings and all these other that were in the backyard on that dead tree, you know, they've been eliminated, which, thank you, but it's just something that if it's not looked at, the mosquitoes are what really surprised me. Okay? Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Next summer, putting it in ahead of time, there is, you have a portable speed thing Lamson Avenue, because from the bank, they're like flying up the street to the point where I have neighbors that scream from their porch, slow down. I mean, and I would think because of the rhetoric, they would, but no, they don't. So whatever, that would be appreciated also. Thank you.
Yes, we could probably put one on just about every street in the city.
You're right, but that costs money.
We need to move it around to other streets, not just a couple of them.
Kevin, 134 Hermann. Have a question on the gas company project. At what point are they going to be doing landscaping?
They come and do a soft restoration, and then they have to obviously come back. What, our inspectors monitor it, they're, don't quote me on this percentage, but I think if, for instance, 80% of the grass does not grow back, I don't know if it's 80, I think it's 80%, they have to come back out. We also require them to hydroseed, which is the final portion. So there's a couple steps in that. Once that final piece comes down, like I said, if 80% of the grass in the tree loan area is not growing, they are required to come back out, and we will stay on them to do that.
Okay, so when they initially came in and dug, they had a piece of equipment on my front yard, not the tree lawn, on the front yard, and burned out some of the grass, well, I get that, and that'll grow back. But now, when they came back again to dig out that same place again, now I have track marks in front of my house. I mean, you know, there's dug-out track marks in my, in my yard, not in the tree lawn, but in the yard.
Like ruts.
Ruts, from track.
We can get them to come out and take a look at that, yes.
Okay, so the other question along with that is the sidewalks. How do you know what sidewalks they're going to replace?
Well, as far as, obviously, all the walks that are, everything that was tore up, everything that was damaged, we require them, we have an inspector that goes out pre-construction, and then they also have to film the entire area. There's a video, sometimes it's actually benefited us to go back and look at that video, where we identified areas where they may have cracked the walks with equipment, and they'll have to come in and replace those. It's actually worked on the footside, where we had some residents saying, oh, they cracked my driveway apron, and they go back to that pre-con video, and they prove, no, your driveway apron was cracked the whole time, and we have a video. So it's, it kind of works both ways. Before that project even started, they had, I think, two crews, and they went out and they filmed everything, road, curbs, sidewalks, all of that. So we can go back on that video and determine was something damaged from them, or was it already damaged? If it was damaged from them, they have to replace that.
Okay, and then in line with that, and I've had neighbors ask me about, if you wanted to get sidewalks replaced that weren't damaged by them, is there any way to tie that in with the people that are doing the sidewalks?
Not with, I don't want to speak for them, but I would doubt that, that is something that they contract out with them, I don't know if they're going to allow that same cost that we pass on, or what they're being charged, or what those costs are. That's something that we will do. When we do sidewalks, we'll allow residents to, you know, jump on that same cost that we're able to secure through getting quotes. For instance, if we do three blocks in front of your house, and you wanted the blocks in front of your apron done, you can, you can get the same price that the city secures. I don't think they'll allow residents to do that. My guess is, they probably work with the same company, and it's not just this small project in Bedford, they probably have contracts all over, so they secured a small number. I don't, I don't believe that they would pass that on. I mean, I could check, but-
I just want, that would be beneficial to the residents, because you end up, if you end up having two walks replaced, and there's one in the middle of that, you know, that may have been lifted or whatever, and they want to have that one replaced also, it would make sense to do all three of them, or all four of them, whatever it is, at the same time, so that would make it a better-looking cycle, but-
Sure, no, I understand, I could check, it's worth the, worth the ask.
I just think it would be beneficial for the residents, if they were able to do that, but as far as the landscaping goes-
I made a note, we'll have someone come out and take a look at those ruts, and then we can get in contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Zina, a motion for adjournment, by Mizek, second by Asbury. Call the roll please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming.